We'll start. If you have the agenda, case number 2824, Home Nature Incorporated, has been withdrawn at the request of the applicant. So, it's not on the agenda anymore. I'll bring this down to 2757, Wickapog Pond Rehab Project. Do we have anybody here for that?
I think that...
We have a letter here.
I seem to remember at the work session that Chick saying that, you know, there was more stuff that was still needed from them, and I think he was going to call them.
He did write to them.
And...
And we do have a response.
I don't think the response was...
I assume that they would be here.
Here's a response that provides the requested modify the wetlands permit.
You don't even have the file. Yes, we do.
Well, we had that letter at the work session, I think.
That one, yeah.
Well, he wrote to Bruce Horwith, and evidently his response from Bruce Horwith.
He wrote to Horwith back in the end of July. This is what he got in response, and my recollection is Chick said it didn't provide everything, and there's no point in going on with the hearing until he provides everything Chick asked for. So, I think Chick was going to call him and suggest...
There's a response dated September the 12th.
Yeah, I think Chick was going to call him and tell him that that September 12th response was not sufficient, and there's no point in coming until he puts together a proper packet.
Then we'll just have to adjourn it.
So, we'll just adjourn it.
Adjourn for all purposes.
I'll second. One favor?
Aye.
On the application of 2830, Colin McCray III, 73 Meadow Lane.
The applicant Gilbert G. Flanagan, 21 South Main Street, Southampton. Now, this case was heard in the first instance last month. I don't believe there was any additional material you particularly requested, but I did submit a letter because there was a letter at the initial hearing from one of the neighbors, and I addressed it orally at the hearing, but I thought I'd put it in writing, so missed.
Think about the pool equipment?
Yeah, that's it, and we're going to make it conform.
Okay.
So, that... And there were certain other things that the neighbor mentioned which I addressed, which had already been addressed in the record, but now you have something in writing.
At the end of last month's hearing, we adjourned it only because the neighbor, we had a letter from the neighbor, and the neighbor requested that we adjourn it to the next meeting in case he wanted to submit anything further, or get representation, or whatever. So, I guess we're going to need to find out if the neighbor's here. That was Katz.
Mr. Katz. Do we have anyone here from Mr. Katz, who's the neighbor to Colin McCray?
And we can close it for decision.
Move it closer to decision.
Let me see, does anybody else out in the audience want to review this application? No, now we can do it.
Move it closer to decision.
I'll second. One favor?
Aye.
That's a record for me, gentlemen.
Bring this down to the new cases, 2831, Mark and Andrea Polsky, 145 Reeves Lane. Now, John, just to be clear in this, we approved something for this last month, right?
Yes.
And was something left out that you wanted to...
Well, it turned out that I had actually made an application. It was part of the application, but the Building Department didn't, not, didn't have the notice, and as a matter of fact, they actually waived the fee for this application because they conceded that it was part of my application, but it wasn't put in the notice. So, of course, you couldn't act on it, but hopefully it's something that we can dispose of.
Item one in the public hearing notice is what we did last month. So, it's only item two that's in the public hearing notice that's involved in this current application.
It's very, very straightforward. It's a very small roof porch, which was part of the original, part of the architecture, part of the plans that you saw last week. We require a total side yard relief just for that portion of the roof porch, as we did require a total side yard relief, and some other relief for the large addition on the rear. It's about 110 square feet, I think, 110, 115 square feet, no habitable space. It rounds it out from an architectural point of view, and most important, I think, hopefully for the board members' consideration, it doesn't come any closer than the existing, pre-existing, albeit non-conforming side yard of 12.8 feet. So, it's just this tiny roof porch addition, which again was part of the overall plan that was submitted last month, and it was not, although it was part of my application, it had not been noticed, as I say, that the Building Department was kind enough to waive the fee. So, it was always part of the plan. I don't want you to think, what's the expression, piecemealing you.
Bootstrapping.
Bootstrapping, piecemealing. It wasn't part of the, it was always part of the application. Again, no habitable space there, no further encroachment, but we would need that bit of side yard relief for it, aggregate side yard, so I don't want to belabor the point. I think, hopefully you'll agree, it's fairly minimal. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Any more questions? Nope.
No.
Anybody out in the audience like to review this application? Yes, sir.
Hi, my name's Jeff Bradley from 166 Halsey Street, and I'm sure John looked at me saying, what's this guy going to complain about, but actually I'm going to commend his client in terms of building out but not up, so... But I just had a question. I don't know if it's in your case, there's a huge beautiful birch tree in the back, and I don't know, perhaps John would, if that's going to be impacted in any way with this addition. If not, I have no complaints.
John, know anything about the birch tree?
Uh, no. If it's in the back, it was part of the approval that you granted last week? I have no idea. Last month, I should say.
Okay, great, thanks.
Let go. We grant a variance in order to permit the proposed roof porch addition with a total side yard of 24.3 feet and a southerly side yard setback of 12.8 feet, as shown on the survey period. Based upon the information presented at last month's hearing and tonight, comma, we find that such variance will not have any detrimental impact on the neighborhood.
Move it accept this decision as proposed.
I'll second. One favor?
Aye.
Case 2832, 320 Murray Place LLC, 320 Murray Place.
For the applicant John Bennett, Melissa, from the Conde Environmental. This is a property which you may know as one of the colicundus properties, which a client has purchased and has a proposal, which is currently before the ARB for the construction of a single-family residence on the property. What we're here for this evening is a request for some side yard relief to construct a garage at the property. And the existing house is at around 50 feet. The nice thing about this redevelopment of the property is that the house itself will be pulled back to 80 feet, so it'll conform with the required front yard setback for Barron's Lane. I want to add that the reason that the house would appear is now at 50 feet as opposed to the required 80 feet from Barron's Lane is that the construction of the house on the property predates the laying out of Barron's Lane. So, at the time the house was constructed, the 50-foot setback that the current house enjoys was a conforming side yard setback. As you're aware, the village code states that on a non-access street frontage, one must adhere with the principal, the setbacks with the principal structure, but the code, I believe doubles the required minimum side yard. Well, no, it was, it adds 10, I think, adds 10. So, what we need here is a little bit of help to construct this garage of a conforming size, 36.2 feet from the east side yard of the property, where again 45 feet is required. So, relatively minor variance of 8.8 feet. Now, although the lot is large, it's about 157,000 square feet, it's pretty well constrained by a lot of setbacks. You have the coastal erosion hazard setback and the dune crest setback. So, what we're trying to do is actually bring the main portion of the improvements on the property into conformance. Also, in terms of impact on the neighbors, the variance, the house, rather, the garage butts a 20-foot wide pedestrian easement, and further, I think, maybe, Melissa, if you have those aerial photographs, it's okay, we could show you. The nice thing about the area where the garage is proposed, and then also...
John, wait, I'm a little bit confused.
Okay.
You already have a garage there. It's a three-story, three-bay garage there.
We're taking it down. The whole house is coming down.
All right, now, it doesn't show on the survey that I have in the site plan where the new garage will go.
Let me see what we have. Let me get you a copy of that. This to the survey.
This one, sure.
Oh, the new gar, no, the existing house that we show on the survey is what you're saying, correct?
I have the existing house.
Okay. But then you have, this is the proposed house. It's part of the package.
Three-story garage, maybe it's the other, maybe it's the other site plan. Might be my mistake.
There's a three-story garage that exists now...
Yeah, it's there now.
...on the property. This is the ASBIL survey.
That's going to come down.
That's going to come down, and you can see that the house, this is the ASBIL survey, the house currently is at 51.5 feet from Barron's Lane. The large bulk of the proposed improvements are going to come away from Barron's Lane and meet an 80-foot front yard setback, which is...
So, the existing house will also come down.
The whole, it's...
Everything's coming down.
The only thing that's not coming down is this pool house, it's going to be reworked, but it's not, that's not coming down. It'll be fairly well constructed, I believe. Yes. So, hopefully it won't cause too much problem in terms of impact on the neighbors, because hopefully you all have this aerial photograph, and you can see that the garage is this rather small gray square, which has been superimposed upon the aerial photograph. And in terms of its impact on the neighbor to the east, which is this Jaffe house, you'll see, not only is there a pedestrian easement in between the house to the east, but also the westerly part of the house to the east has, is where the accessory structures are. So, there won't be any issue of this garage looming over the property to the east. Also, in terms of a benefit from the, to the neighbor to the north, the proposed garage will be, even when it's raised, will be approximately 12 feet lower than the existing three-story garage. 12 feet lower than the existing garage. So, although we need a little bit of relief, eight feet there, from a point of view of impact on the neighbors, actually it'll be a beneficial impact on the neighbor to the north, because it'll be coming down 12 feet from the existing three-story garage, attached garage, and also the neighbor to the east, or all the accessory structures are in the area where we're requesting this 8.8-foot variance. Again, the lot is fairly well constrained, although it's large, it's fairly well constrained by a lot of regulatory setbacks. So, we need relief not only for the, I forgot to mention, not only to relieve, require that 8.8-foot bit of relief from the required accessory setback, but we also need to put it in the front yard, although one could argue, one could argue maybe it isn't in the front yard because the house extends out to the north, and the garage is actually behind the leading northerly edge of the house, but I thought it best to advertise for that. Oh, no, 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 excuse me. It does need relief as it relates to Barron's Lane.
Need relief from Barron's Lane.
Yeah. So, it's a rather minimal request. It allows us to redevelop this property in a way that extinguishes significant nonconformities of the main house. We don't think it has much of an effect, if any, on the surrounding properties. Indeed, it'll probably have a beneficial effect on the property to the north, and we hope you agree that it's a minimal request for relief. The house itself now is before the Architectural Review Board. We've had two hearings on it, and it seems to be, you know, I hate to predict, but it seems to be, seems to be not that many problems with that before the ARB. But in any event, that's where we are, so it's a total redevelopment of the property, extinguishing quite a few nonconformities. Need that 8.8 feet of relief.
I have a question. The thing says, "proposed equipment."
Where is that?
Right behind the garage. What is that equipment?
I don't know. I don't know. Melissa tends to know these things. I don't, but I hope I'm not putting you on the spot.
No, I believe that's...
Not the pool equipment?
No, no, I see the pool equipment.
Is it a generator?
I'm actually not that sure what it is. I know because the house is theme is own, we cannot, we're not having a basement here or an attic, so I believe that's going to be some of the equipment that's going to be servicing the house, but I'm not sure.
See, we have...
It's actually not on the elevation either. I think it's an equipment, I'm pretty sure it's an equipment pad.
It's a pad.
It's not as close to Barron's Lane as the garage.
But the garage needs eight-foot relief.
Eight-point eight feet of relief, yes.
But it almost looks like part of that might also...
It may need relief, too.
Even if it's an equipment pad?
Yeah.
Well, if it's closer than it being, and it's sort of a noisy piece of equipment, then we might want screening, or move it a little bit, or...
We, I actually do have the landscape plans, if you'd like to see them.
But we don't know what the equipment is.
Why don't, you know what, why don't we do the following, if it's okay? Again, assuming the board would be happy, there's no reason why we couldn't attempt to make this equipment comply with the 45-foot required setback by pivoting it?
We have to talk to the engineer.
Oh.
They could move it over a bit to the left.
Well, why don't we...
Well, we investigate that.
Well, yeah, we'll investigate that. I apologize, I didn't even catch that.
If you do, then put the measurement on there, too, that we know.
And we'll put the setback on there as well.
Very close.
It's very, very good.
One inch is 30 feet.
Well, does anyone have a scale?
Right.
Does anyone have a scale?
Needs 8-point something feet.
Right. Let's see. See, the old Leatherman has to see.
Well, we have to show it to you anyway, so we'll put the setback on there.
Going to measure it out now.
Yeah, right.
Do you have it? Do you have a scale?
I have a Leatherman.
Does a Leatherman have an engineer's scale on it?
An engineer's scale, no.
It really is superior to Boy Scout.
I think it's one-eighth of an inch, that would be...
No, that's architects', right? It's one-eighth, it'll go 30, right?
About four feet.
Four feet, needs to go another eighth of an inch, maybe.
Needs another four feet.
You know, we can make that work. If I have to make it a little wider, I'll talk to the engineer. So, you're talking about just bringing that and making that conform with the 45-foot setback?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll make that happen.
Any other questions about the variance itself? Would it be possible, then, unless, of course, I'll sub, public comment, we could disclose it, the written submission, try to make it work, review the survey, assuming that...
I just have one question. There's so much clutter on this map that it's...
It's a busy map, yeah.
This is part of the proposed house.
Yes, yes.
So, the proposed garage is not in the front yard to the door.
The front yard as it is. Yes, I started, yes.
Well, then it doesn't need front yard.
No, it doesn't.
I don't know why you asked for it.
Belt and suspenders.
Okay.
No, you're right, it doesn't need front yard relief as to this easement area. Oh, no, 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 front yard, because this is the front yard, even though it's on Murray Place. It wouldn't need front yard, because it's behind the northerly edge of the house, yes.
Right, it wouldn't need front yard relief from the north, and it doesn't need front yard relief from Barron's Lane, because it's the accessory.
Yes, exactly.
It needs side yard relief.
Yes, yes, that's, absolutely, you're correct.
Any other? No. Anybody out in the audience like to review this application? I'm going to have to hold it open, or close it to submission?
Tell me again what it is that you're going to be submitting?
I'm going to, we're going to submit a revised survey, but it looks like we're very close with that equipment pad. We'll just make it work with the 45-foot.
Yeah, we can adjourn it for decision subject to submission of the revised survey. Of course, you understand, John, if we get the revised survey and we have questions about it, we'll have to...
Understand, yeah, that's correct.
Move we adjourn it for decision subject to the revised survey.
I'll second. One favor? On the application, case number 2833, Leland and Jared Abrams, 107 Wickapog Road.
Good evening. For the applicants, Robert Conley of Farrell Fritz, 50 Station Road, Watermelon, New York. As indicated in the notice of public hearing, the applicants are seeking relief from this board to locate the proposed residence 60 feet from the front yard lot line, where 80 feet is required by code. It should be noted that the existing residence is currently situated approximately 55 feet from the front yard lot line, so the applicants are proposing to retreat somewhat from the front yard lot line. The subject property, 107 Wickapog Road, is approximately 25,770 square feet in size, but is subject to the restrictions of the R-80 zone. As such, the property is non-conforming as to lot size. And as I just previously mentioned, the existing residence sits 55 feet from the front yard lot line, and is only a few feet from the westerly property line. The applicants, by way of this application, are proposing to remove the existing house and replace with a house that is more centrally located on the property, and that conforms to zoning and all other respects. Annex to the statement of support, which I just handed up to the board, I provided surveys for the properties located at 83 Wickapog Road, 145 Wickapog Road, 177 Wickapog Road, 201 Wickapog Road, 221 Wickapog Road, and 239 Wickapog Road. If you look at the surveys, you will see that the house at 83 Wickapog sits 54.7 feet from the front yard lot line. The house at 145 Wickapog Road sits 69.9 feet from the front yard lot line. The house at 177 Wickapog Road sits 51 feet. The house at 201 Wickapog Road sits 51 feet as well from the front yard lot line. The house at 221 Wickapog Road sits 66 feet from the front yard lot line, but the porch is only 60 feet from the front yard lot line. And finally, 239 Wickapog Road sits just 44.1 feet from the front yard lot line. The point I'm attempting to make here is that it's not uncommon for houses fronting on Wickapog Road to be situated within required front yard setback, and should the board grant this request of relief, there will be no discernible change in the character of the neighborhood. The applicants, as a condition to the grant of this application, are willing to install and maintain a hedgerow privet at a minimum of five feet in height to reduce any visual impact that the proposed house might have from Wickapog Road. But again, I think it's important to note that the house that's proposed to be constructed will be five feet farther back from Wickapog Road than the existing house. I've also attached to the statement of support surveys of properties along Wickapog Road that have been able to meet the 80-foot setback. However, as you'll be able to see, I believe those are the last three exhibits. Those lots are far more deep than the applicant's lot. The subject lot is only about 192 feet deep, whereas the property is at 61 Wickapog Road has a depth of 324.46 feet, and the properties at 127 Wickapog Road and 135 both have depths of about 177, I'm sorry, 277. I would also note for the board that, as recently as July 24, 2014, this board granted similar relief to another house on Wickapog Road. This board granted the property located 177 Wickapog Road, among other relief, front yard variance to 50.9 feet in order to permit modifications to the existing two-story house. And in another application, the board on June 26, 2008, granted the property located at 83 Wickapog Road a front yard variance of 58 feet in order to permit an addition to the existing house. The house as a subject of this application is proposed to be 60 feet from the front yard lot line, a setback that's farther than both proposed, than both properties referred to above. Due to the nonconforming size of the lot, along with the depth of the lot, there really is no other option for the applicants to pursue than to seek relief from this board. The applicants are intending to leave the existing swimming pool in place, and as you can see from the aerial photograph that I handed up, the applicant's property is outlined in yellow. Without relief from this board, the house would have to be constructed virtually right up against the pool, not allowing for any separation between the house and pool, and greatly reducing the usable rear yard. Because the variance requested will not have any impact on the abutting adjacent properties, the request of relief is not substantial. Moreover, when taken the totality of circumstances into account, the fact that the lot is undersized and not as deep as other properties in the neighborhood, as well as the fact that many other houses are setback much less than 80 feet, the front yard property line, from the front yard property line leads to the conclusion that the request of relief would not result in a substantial variance being granted. Finally, the applicants would submit that the need for the variance is not self-created. The lot preexists nonconform, the lot's pre-existing nonconforming size, and the application of today's code to the property, along with the applicant's desire to leave this existing swimming pool in place, requires the applicant to seek relief from this board. I did notice that a neighbor in the rear of the applicant's property submitted a letter to the board regarding the size of the house. I don't know where the 3,700 square foot number comes from. We didn't submit that number with the zoning board application. The 4,500 number is correct, and it's my understanding, too, that the 510 square foot garage is part of that 4,500 square foot house.
He says he doesn't object to the variance application, but he's confused about the 3,700 and the 4,500 square feet.
Right, and I don't know where the 3,700 square feet comes from.
He doesn't say where he got it, he just says the application indicates that the house would contain about 3,700 square feet.
And I reviewed our application that we submitted, we never...
It says here, not 3,700, 150.
Okay, you want to go five foot back, but how much higher is the new house in elevation?
I don't know what the elevation is, but it's going to meet zoning.
Yeah, but if you're arguing about less minimum impact, perhaps that's data that might be included.
Could you point out in the application for us where the 4,592 number is indicated?
That's on the Architectural Review Board application.
It's not on...
It's not on the zoning board application.
But there's no 3,700 square foot mentioned anywhere.
No. And the ARB hearing is in October.
I don't know where that number came from.
I don't know if he tried to scale it himself, and... I don't know if he tried to scale it himself and, from the survey, but...
Now, that number, the 4,592, does not include the garage, or does it include the garage?
I believe it does include the garage.
Includes the garage.
Maybe if you take the garage off, that comes out to where the 3,700 living area...
About 4,000.
Yeah.
Garage is attached?
It is attached.
So that would be included. Do we have any other questions?
Yeah.
Rick?
No questions?
Anybody out there in the audience who should be heard of this application? Please come up.
My name is Duran Flynn. I live at 145 Wickapog Road, and a couple things regarding what was just said. The neighbor in the back of the property is Mr. John Nugent. I spoke to him, and he received a letter in the mail stating that this was going to be in front of the zoning board. And the letter he got stated it was 37 plus or minus square feet.
Who we got the letter from?
It was a required letter that had to be sent out to all the neighbors to notify them that this was being put in front of the zoning board. And, because he spoke to me about this, and he said that he didn't understand why the zoning board letter said 3,700 plus or minus, I'm not sure the exact number, and the architectural review letter he got said, I thought he said it was 4,200 something.
There is nothing in the application to us that talks about 3,700 square feet.
Okay, well, I didn't bring that with me, because...
I see what you're talking about now, though.
So I don't know. That may have not included the garage.
You're right in the letter that you sent around.
Right.
It does say that there.
Right, that's, that's where it is. Right, right. So the letter he received said 3,700. The architectural board meeting in October said 42...
4,590.
Okay, yeah. So that's, that was his question on the discrepancy.
It is going to be the 4,592. It's not going to be 3,700.
Yeah, evidently, yeah. Mm-hmm. I'll let him know. So regarding the front setback, even though the houses along Wickapog that were cited in the setback, those are all older houses that were built prior to any zoning laws. And this is a photograph of the existing house that I wanted to let everybody look at. And the reason that the setback is where it is is because it's a small house, and it does not have a 35-foot-high roof line. And it is in proportion to the property, whereas the new house that's proposed is much larger, and the frontage is wider. There have been a few houses on Wickapog that have been approved for building that... There are two new farmhouses at 135 Wickapog and next door to 135 to the west. And although they are on a half an acre and are large, their frontage width is narrow, and the size of the house is in the depth of the house. So that was in comments based on what was said tonight. I am here to oppose the, this house, because it's going to be a new house. And as you can see, the house that they're going to tear down is an older house on Wickapog, and it is actually a historical house. This house is owned by my great-great-grandfather. It was built in the early 1800s. My original ancestor came to Southampton in 1670 and married the widow of Edward Howell, who founded Southampton. And that's why my family's property, which was potato farmers, was from Wickapog, Old Town, Hampton Road, Narrow Lane, a little bit north of Hampton Road, a little bit east of Narrow Lane. And I don't think that this house should be torn down. Other houses on the street that were older farmhouses have been kept and added on to.
You have to realize that whether it gets torn down is not, that's not up to us.
I know. I just want to make you aware of that, that there was a discrepancy on the qualification of the house being torn down. And that it does have an historical...
Sorry, as the chairman tried to indicate to you, that's not a matter within our jurisdiction. That's a matter within the jurisdiction of the Board of Architecture Review and Historic Preservation.
Okay, well, I'm just here to let you know that, too, because it should be considered in your decision on this property. It does have a special character and historic aesthetic interest or value of the local region. It is identified with historic personages. It does embody distinguishing characteristics and an architectural style. I submit this, which is a house down the street, which is Glenn Halsey Jr.'s house, which was built at the same time and for the same reason. The house that they're asking to be torn down was built to replace a 1600s house that the family owned on the corner of Wickapog and Old Town Road. And it does have a unique location and physical characteristic, and it resembles established and familiar visual features to people. When I have talked to people about this house, they know the house, and...
Your, your family no longer owns it?
No, we haven't owned it from, since the 50s. The woman who bought the house loved the house, renovated the house, saved the house, and cherished the house. And she passed away, and she gave it to her daughter, who she wanted to have the same feeling towards, but she did not. And so she sold the house, and now the new owners are going to tear it down. And it really should not be torn down, and I know...
Once again, that's not up to us.
I understand that, but...
You have nothing to do with that whatsoever.
I understand that, but I just...
The ARB decides that, and the building inspector decides that.
I, yes, but I just want to bring that to your attention. But like I said earlier in my comments, as far as the setbacks go, the setbacks that this house wants to retain apply to the older houses that are smaller in size. And so therefore, I think it should be denied.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Would anybody else who'd like to read this application?
Again, Jeff Brodley, 166 Halsey Street. And I would just, I thought that Mr. DiVenni's question in terms of the mass versus the variance would be one that I would ask the board to consider, and perhaps it's worthy of adjournment until you have all the information relative to, the setback relative to the mass of the house, which I think the, the previous person was addressing. So I offer that as a consideration. Thanks.
It's kind of hard to visualize without something, right? Without any drawings of it.
Well, good serving, cyclin.
You do, but...
You can ask the applicant to submit elevation plans if you want to. They've probably already done that, submitted them to the ARB.
Would you like to do that before we blank?
You probably already have those, and you could have them in for the next meeting or have them by the work session.
Sure.
So we'll hold this open then.
Okay.
So move...
Second, all favor?
Aye.
I noticed today this property was not posted.
Yes, can I address that?
Yes, please. You are.
I'm Victoria Fraser. Good evening, gentlemen. Would you like me to address that first?
Hmm?
Would you like me to address that first?
Yes, please.
The property, we live in Connecticut. We had requested someone to post it for us. All the information was in our garage. I believed that that person had posted it. I apologize. I have not been out here since the, I don't know, the early September, very early September. I apologize. I was not told it wasn't posted, and I honestly do not know, because I only came out this afternoon, if it was in fact posted, but then it fell down, and so the lawn people put the sign into the garage, or if it was posted at all and I was not told. So I apologize, gentlemen.
To make a long story short, we're going to have to adjourn this matter for them to repost, because we don't have any affidavit of posting.
Right, I was not going to sign the affidavit. I was going to tell you, gentlemen, because I'm not, I'm certainly not going to lie about that, so I'll...
We should just hold this open until next month, that's all.
Okay, that's, that's fine. So all I need to do is put the sign up and then come back.
You, you got to make sure that...
The affidavits are sent out.
I sent out the affidavits.
You have to make sure that it stays up.
Yeah.
Because you're going to have to sign an affidavit.
I understand that, yes, sure.
That it's been up for 10 days.
I do.
Did you do the mailings?
I did all the mailings.
Okay, you can give them to...
You can hand them in anyway.
What? Okay, that's fine.
If you have them, you can hand them in then.
What?
If you have the...
I have them. I brought it all.
You can hand it to the county.
Okay, that's fine, all right.
I think we should adjourn it, because we don't know that we have jurisdiction.
No.
Okay, fine.
Move adjourn for all purposes.
All second? All favor?
Aye.
The application, 2835, 24 Pulaski Street, 24 Pulaski Street, same problem, no posting that I saw.
It was posted. I put, my, my firm posted it.
I looked all around. I didn't see any signs.
I know. We, we posted the property. I don't know whether or not it was taken down. We have an affidavit of posting. Affidavit of posting and mailing.
I believe I saw the sign. I wonder if it sat there or something.
You see it Saturday?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, that...
It was Saturday, so maybe it came down between Saturday and Sunday.
Yeah, I have, I, I...
He says he saw it.
Oh, okay.
Rob says he saw it.
Well, that's good.
We have someone in the back who may want to comment on that. You want to come up and just comment on the posting?
But I didn't see it.
You have to come up here.
Okay. Well, is there anybody that has a, let me ask the following question. Is anyone here that has a question about the posting?
Is there anyone who has a question about the posting?
I don't know that anyone was there.
Okay, well, let me ask you something, sir.
Come on up, let me see.
Let me make inquiry of this, if I may.
Yeah.
You live, first of all, you're here, so you've waived any lack of notice. Second of all, you live on Halsey Street, which is approximately a mile away, and you have no, not even any administrative standing.
I'm not, I'm not here as an administrator in Africa. I'm just here as a public citizen.
He lives on my street.
Oh, he's okay then.
If he lives on Halsey Street, he's okay.
I would have to agree with that, because my dad grew up on Halsey Street, so I have to agree with that.
Do we have an affidavit of posting?
Yep, I submitted it.
This has to do with the posting?
Yeah, I live two houses away. There's been nothing posted there. I didn't even know until I got, I got my letter four days ago, and it was, and I, I didn't even know. I looked over there, and there's nothing posted. There's still nothing posted. So if he wants to sign an affidavit that it's been there for 10 days... I already submitted an affidavit. Well, then you lied. What? You lied. If you...
Let's not get into name-calling, please.
If, no, you're signing an affidavit that says it's been posted. It's not posted. He's got a picture, too. I mean, I... I've, I've been practicing before this board since 198... Okay, well, I've been saying... You know what? Will you let me finish? I've been saying for 48 years, okay? And it's not there, and there's every neighbor in here hasn't seen it. So what, are we all lying? I don't care if he proceeds, but to sit here and say that an affidavit you signed that's been up for 10 continuous days is ridiculous.
No one's fighting with you. Take it easy. Now, did you think, did you see the sign?
It's getting a little fuzzy now.
No, I didn't sign it.
I thought I saw a sign Saturday. I thought I saw a sign.
The board members said they saw the sign. Let's just, let's just, you know what? First of all, everyone's here, so they've waived any notice. It's not a jurisdictional issue.
I understand that.
If the board would like me to repost it and put it on for next month, just so that we don't get into this whole Donnybrook, that's fine.
That may be best.
In, in almost 30 years, I've never had this issue. Every affidavit that I've signed, or somebody who's under my control has signed, has been true and accurate, okay?
Alls I can say is I didn't see, it was not there when I was there.
Well...
And some other people say it wasn't there.
You didn't see it, that probably means more to me than anything, you didn't see it, so why don't we...
Why don't we just put it off until next month?
John, you, you know, they get blown down. Landscapers take them down. They get, the weather, you know, kids play with them.
That's fine.
So it could have been there, and two days later it could have been gone, but not enough...
But I will, I will categorically tell you that this, I, I don't appreciate being called a liar in front of the board. And if I got my Irish up, I think it was, it was warranted.
It was, yeah.
Well, hey, I have another suggestion about that property. Some of our board members are getting a little old in the tooth and can't get over the chain.
There's a chain-linked fence across the property.
Not a chain-linked fence, a chain.
A chain, a chain, a chain.
I just told my client to take it down.
With a sign that says, "No trespassing."
Okay.
When he says, "I'm so old, you can't get over the chain," he means me. Because he says he got over it.
I got over it.
I didn't even try to get over it.
Okay, why don't we just, just do that?
I think that's the best way to handle it.
Before it is, can I make one suggestion?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Because, because I know that the board has some concerns about the extent of the pyramid law relief.
Okay.
I think it would, I know you've addressed in your application, at least, what could be done as a right without a var, without a pyramid law variance. You recited it in the application. Maybe it would be helpful if we had, I think you gave us elevation plans for the proposed house. Maybe it would be helpful if you gave us elevation plans for the existing house, together with what you could do as a right.
Why don't I give you, if I may, Rick, I, in anticipation of that and part of my presentation, I had, I don't have elevations for the existing house. It's built around the 30s, but I, I do have a, a letter from David Sherwood, who's the project architect that does, does just that, the allowable extension of the pyramid as a right without a variance in the proposed. It's all nicely set forward here.
Yeah, but if the board is going to try to compare what your proposal is in relation to what you could do as a right, it's going to be difficult to make that comparison without seeing some kind of sketches or something.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's fair enough, okay.
That might include the pool as well.
There's got to be some concerns about the pool.
Well, the...
We don't need elevation plans for the pool.
No, 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 but setbacks, the setbacks are not going to fly, maybe.
Remember, there's a couple of things I want to tell you about the pool, I know, but I want you to think about this in the next month. The house next door has a variance for the pool of 50, for, for more than is being requested here. And that's to the east, and as it relates to the west, it's the largest lot in the area, and it's, the pool is proposed to be abutting the rear yard of that lot, where all the accessory structures, including the pool, is.
We'll have to look at it.
You'll look at it, sure.
We'll have to look at it.
I, I'm confident that I can present a very conservative case, despite my alleged lack of posting and being called a liar.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we're going to just adjourn this.
Yeah, that's fine.
Move adjourn for all purposes.
At my request.
All favor?
Aye.
The September meeting of the Southampton Village Zoning Board Appeals is concluded. The September meeting of the Southampton Village Zoning Board of Appeals is concluded.